All the Manitowoc Public School District meeting to order, welcome you all here tonight. And if you would please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to this flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic in which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Make sure you've signed into board book. And we'll ask for the roll by.
Christopher Abel.
Here.
David Bowman.
Here.
Biff Hanson.
Here.
Ann Holson.
Here.
Mary Lofe Bonnig.
Here.
Keith Shaw.
Here.
Gary Trask.
Present.
Thank you. And we will move on to public input. Barbara.
Barbara Posty, 25 Wilson Street, Manitowoc. Really happy with the outreach the board and the people have given, but I'm also looking for peer-driven grade-level home-school inclusion with modification. This is so vital because it opens the door to true community. All students' uniqueness on full display by working together with staffs and students, they gain understanding and acceptance. Introducing it and starting it in lower grades, it evolves from there and becomes an everyday routine. Students have individual attributes that may be the same or quite different. It's the overall acceptance that truly matters. It builds a self of belonging. We are all unique, and it is through communication and collaboration we find belonging and belief in oneself and trust within your community. Evolve be the change that is so needed. A strong team that role models what communication and collaboration truly is. Strive to share the understanding and acceptance, build students into strong, self-motivated and productive community partners. Along with this, it stands to point out that we are never sure of a student's driven passion unless they are allowed to discover and grow. Embrace them, all their lives are forever changed by your interactions. Drive to be so that they can thrive. Without education, there is no life, just mere existence. There is no easy way, commit to the task. And I also wanted to bring up another point that I heard the other day at the meeting. They were asking if you could get college credit for doing a portfolio. And my daughter did it. She was a junior taliesin at Frank Lloyd Wright School of, which is not in existence anymore. She was a true apprentice. And this is her portfolio that she had to hand in, and she did get college credit for it.
Sure.
It was in the Gifted and Talented Program. You asked the other day, and here's the form for the public school district.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Barbara. Have we no other requests for public input? We will close public input and move on to the consent agenda. And you can see it on your agenda there. Anybody wish to have anything pulled for discussion? Consent agenda. Do you wish anything pulled? Third final time, does anybody want anything pulled?
Bearing say none. Can I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Shaw, second by Mr. Bowman. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. They are approved. We do not have a student representative. It is summer, and students should be off on summer vacation. We allow them to do that. That's what they earn from 180 days.
That's not what my parents ever paid me.
All right. And we move on to the report from the superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson. Hopefully, everybody had a wonderful holiday weekend. The weather was great. I had a chance to play like four rounds of golf and do some things, so it was great. Had a couple of days in the U.P., you can never go wrong with that. So my superintendent's report this month just highlights a couple of things I just thought I'd put in for information. Wanted to make sure everybody had an updated list of our administrators in the district, so of our building administrative team listed, and then also our central office team with contact information for our new team. And speaking of our new team, I'd like to formally introduce to our community and to the public Stacy Opali, who is our new Director of Human Resources, and Nathan Milkie, who is our Director of Business Services. So huge welcome to them. Hit the ground running already. We had a bunch of team meetings and doing a great job, and we're very grateful for them to be on our team. And speaking of gratefulness, I also want to say, you know, two real giants, in my opinion, in public education and service, you're not going to get any better than, you know, Mike Knoll and Ken Mishler. And the service that they provided this district, Mike for the last couple of years and, you know, Ken coming in this year to help us out, is just a true testament to the type of people they are. They're highly committed, very caring, they were collaborative, and boy, just a vast, with their experience, vast knowledge. And I will say, I wanted to be as sponge as much as possible working with the two of them because of all the things they can learn. So a huge thank you to them and for their service. And, you know, we'll stay in touch with Mike and, you know, Ken's still doing work for the foundation, so he'll be in every couple of weeks. Just discussing our all ships. So we've kind of talked about this a little bit. We went to, this year, we started a public relations team in the district made up of staff members from each building. And early on in that conversation, one of the things that was brought up when we're talking about how do we build a true community of learners here in Manitowoc was this idea that we sort of seem a little fragmented, you know, with our mascots and things throughout the elementary schools. In fact, I think if you would walk down 8th Street and quiz someone and say, "What's Jefferson?", you know, they might go like, "I don't know." No, they went there, they definitely know, right? But, you know, one of the things that strong, successful districts in building this culture do is they essentially come together as one mascot. And for us, it's the ships, right? So we're announcing it's a soft rollout, and we're going to do some rebranding. We've got a new website. We're going to be doing some different things with the ship logos and stuff with sizes and things. And I think one of our elementary principals already said, "Hey, I saw your thing, and we're ordering some banners," and they're going to start. But, you know, by no means we're not going to go scratching the Mustang off the Monroe or anything like that, you know? But as things progress with our facilities work, we will be cognizant that we're all ships. And one of the things we'll talk about this summer, fall, when we kick off school is, I'm a firm, I love the analogy of us as the educators in this learning community being the shipbuilders and our kids being the ships. And I think it fits in, and we talk about, you know, their dreams are, you know, your dreams are our compass, and it sort of all fits together. And so we're just very excited about the idea that we can infiltrate our community with ships. And it's very unifying in that, if you think about it currently, only 20% of our school district, student-wise, at least staff-wise, are sporting the ships stuff, right? And in a competitive world that we live in, in terms of, you know, marketing and branding, we really feel strongly that if 100% of our learning community is sporting and repping the ship, ships, that that will be a way for us to unify as a district and as a community. In addition, we're working on our Big Rock planning. We just got our new teammates, and so we're working through the 100-day planning cycles, as we've discussed before. And you can expect to see them in the months of August and September coming through committees. One update on our facility advisory committee is that our groups have finished the phase where they are doing a build-your-own-district project. They came up with over 40 different options, when they're mainly considering these two factors: number of schools and grade conflict. And so what they'll be doing now in this next month's meeting, and we, it'll be, this month's July meeting will be towards the end of July, they'll be looking at all the different options. And Mike Hacker does a really good job of basically representing all of the options in like one sheet with some trends and some things that were commonalities amongst the different options, or sometimes differences. And then the real focus will turn July and August as, all right, now from this, let's start deducing some things down. You know, what information do you need additionally to make some considerations for us to consider moving forward? We're on pace with our timeline. Things look pretty good to be, our hope is to be sort of wrapped up with that by October and then have some real, real things to bring you all on that. And then I'm very excited that, you know, stemming from our visioning meeting on May 21st, we, Biff and I had a meeting with Patty Vicman at Wasby and discussed some of the items that came up through our conversation. And the beauty of this is apparently because we use them for the superintendent search, this is considered a transition meeting, and it's free. So it's all nice and packaged, and we're not paying extra for it, so that's a nice opportunity. We're going to do a 5 o'clock start with, we'll do it like a Jimmy John's or some type of, just have a bite to eat and then get going in the presentation. But it's going to be a two-hour deal, so we thought we'd try to get it started at 5 to be done by 7. And I would be happy to entertain any questions anybody has.
Yeah, Lee, I'm just curious about, I mean, not that I need to have any voice on this, but I'd be curious to see what those 40 possibilities are. Is it like a succinct thing?
Sure. I'll be able to share that with you.
Perfect.
I'll share what I've, what I've been doing or trying to do is share in these updates, like the slide deck. But the last two months, we haven't really had much of a slide deck because they're just doing the, you know, they're doing their activity. But now, once he produces these documents, which I actually should have by next week, we talked about having those by next week, so I'll share them all out with you. I'll send an email communication with them.
Thank you.
One of the nice things about the Vicman meeting, special meeting this time, is she's going to be sharing with us an evaluation tool for the superintendent.
So we can actually evaluate using data. Yeah. And get a clear picture of the job that's being done, and that's something we, I think we've needed for a while.
Yeah, we had one for a while, and then we had.
So that would be a good thing to do.
I was really impressed, when we were at the state convention, Mr. Shaw and I had an opportunity to take a look at that in a presentation, and it was really slick. I mean, you all have your own logins, you can go in and do the assessments and captures of, I'll tell you, it really takes a lot off the president, because the president in the past, you know, like on the library board, you're like the collector of all the things, and then you have to put it all together, so this will be nice.
I'm really thankful.
Yeah.
Easier for us.
Any other questions? Otherwise, of course, we also have the director's report, which you have in writing, and our director team is here to answer any questions you may have about that as well.
Are we still a principal associate down at Lincoln?
We are.
Sure. I extended an offer to somebody today, so that'll be coming.
Chris.
Thank you. I just want to thank Director Opali because she made sure she called out on our personnel report for hiring everyone that is coming in on a license with stipulation, which I think is vital. I understand why we do it. I have a problem with that. I think it's vital that the board knows that we're doing that, how many we're doing, and that we're always looking to make sure those people are providing quality education. I trust that we are doing that. I know we have some stuff in place, but I really appreciate it all being explicitly stated right there. Thank you.
Any other questions? Saying none? Moving on to unfinished business, I don't believe we have any. New business. Over to the finance committee. Mr. Shaw.
The dinner service project at Manitowoc Public School District looked at your information that was provided by Amanda Estelle, who is the director of our food program. She did an outstanding job of presenting what this, what this program would entail, what it was all about, cost, federal reimbursement, what we hoped to gain by it, and the possibility of serving the community, which finance and facilities committee felt, centered itself, great information and a great benefit to the community. We're pretty much emulating and working closely with Manasha Public School District, who has had this program for a couple of years now. So that did an outstanding job, or she did an outstanding job of reiterating this information. I cannot answer any questions outside of what you have read there, but it did pass the committee to go to the full board to implement this program next year in hopes that we can service our community and the community that has supported education a great deal. And if we can turn that support around and help the fortunate families with a nightly meal, I think that's the purpose of the game out of this committee. Committee members, any other information, anything you'd like to add? Ann, David?
That's before we discuss, get a motion to approve.
I do, I make the motion that the Manitowoc Public School District
I have a second.
Enter into this, this outstanding program, serving dinner with our two buildings, Jefferson and Washington, on a trial basis.
I have a second.
Back 26th School District.
I was going to say supervisor, but we're not supervisors.
Ms. Holson with the second. Now, discussion. Lee, did you want to make a comment?
Yeah, I do. And in addition to what Keith, you know, this report from the committee, you saw also in that same committee meeting, we looked at the preliminary budget, $150 is our food service budget. And as you saw in the last couple of years, there's been a pretty consistent, you say, reduction or deficit.
A draw.
A little draw on that. Now, the good news is that we have a couple of years, according to our numbers, a couple of years to work this through. But the other thing that I really wanted to point out, and I thank Amanda for her work in conjunction with, collaborating with Manasha, is really the financial impact of this also. This is a very smart thing to do, because as we're trying to reduce the gap in our deficit, what we're able to do here is take something that we were, we were providing a snack for those kids at Washington already as part of our Boys and Girls Program, but that was being reimbursed at a rate of $121, which, I mean, it costs us at least a dollar to give it to them, right? So this is just a, there'll be a bunch, we're figuring about a $3 margin that we can, the goal would be if her numbers are right in this memo, you know, that's reducing that gap. And, you know, I don't know if we can get quite that extra year out of it, but as I was explaining to Biff in a conversation, you know, as much as you can get, if you do decide to move forward with CEP, needing to subsidize it from 10, the smaller that deficit can be, makes it more feasible. So I just really kudos to her and her team for this work, and thanks for the support of the committee.
Chris. Yeah, I absolutely support this. I think it's a great idea. I think it's a great thing to try, and these are exactly the schools at which to try it. Certainly hope that it's successful enough for us to expand it to other schools.
Any other member?
I guess to go along those lines, is, this is a CEP program, as I learned this week. There are other schools that do this, but they don't qualify for CEP. They're taking it out of budget just because they know how important it is that kids at nutrition is good. So we, because we are in this program and we qualify for this program, we are using tax dollars that we send to Washington that's being sent back to us. So instead of it going somewhere else in the country to somebody else, we're actually able to use some of that money that we've sent in, using it for a good purpose, and that's, you know, we're feeding bids. And hopefully, with this program, kids at Jefferson and Washington will be nursed correctly. So I think this is a nice step for us, and I hope this works out.
Any other comments, questions? Then let's vote. All those in favor of the dinner program at Jefferson and Washington, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose say nay. And it passes. Mr. Shaw?
Sure. The next thing that came out of the, first of all, finance and facilities committee was the student accident insurance expenditures for the 2025-26 School District. Nathan and Ken brought up to the committee that the cost of this program, as indicated in the memo that was sent to you in board book, was $11,564, of which our district paid and was never used, wasn't used, was needed. Because we have accidental occurs, we have, we have insurance that covers all of the basic needs within the district, plus we have a supplemental insurance program for an accident that does occur. So it was the recommendation out of the business office, finance office, that we do not involve ourselves in this program this year, that we do not take out this accident insurance, and it passed the committee three to nothing, favoring the recommendation from the business office to not get involved with this accidental insurance policy for the 25-26 school year. So that is my motion to accept the request from the business office not to get involved with the accidental insurance policy program for the 2025 school.
Do we need a motion?
We have a motion. We have a motion from Chairman Shaw, and we have a second from.
Do we have, do we have to have a motion, something we're not going to do?
Yes.
We do?
Yes.
Let's not go over that ground again.
I'll move board member Trask with the second. Any other discussion on this? Nate, do you have anything to add?
No.
Okay.
I just want to, you know, there've been a number of insurance things come by us. I don't, you know, the other one that we have, we have no insurance, no, nobody that wants to insure us, but, boy, the premiums are going way up everywhere, way up. And that's across the board, is it?
Yeah. And, you know, there's a chance to save a little bit of money to offset the huge commercial property insurance that we have. I don't have any options.
So let's keep the discussion to this, but I think we need to discuss that other thing at a future meeting. Any other discussion on the accident insurance that is in a sense for overinsurance for this? Any other discussion? All those in favor of discontinuing the insurance, say aye. Aye. Oppose say nay. And it passes. Do you have anything else for us, Mr. Shaw?
I do not. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And we'll move on to the curriculum committee.
The curriculum committee met, and we were presenting with the academic standards for coming school year. This is kind of an annual process that we have to go through. Extremely well-written, extremely comprehensive. They give the guidelines for what should be taught without demanding how it should be taught, which is exactly what we should be doing. So I would make a motion that we approve the academic standards report to us.
A motion. And we have a second for Mr. Abel. Any other discussion on this? Bearing say none? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose say nay. Do we have anything else from curriculum? So we can go on to our committee reports, and motions are done. We'll go on to other business remarks from the board president. I've been in touch with a lot of alumni. When you were talking about ships in the district, it always amazed me, when people come back for class reunions, how much pride they have in graduating from Lincoln High School and graduating from Manitowoc, and that's a good feeling to have. Class of '85, recently, we had a reunion. That doesn't seem very long ago to me, but I guess.
But. Yeah, we had like 50 or 60 alum come to the tour. It was really well-attended, day to night.
You were a sophomore.
You're not here.
Tenth year of teaching. But it, you know, so I kind of like that idea of ships, but I like that idea of we do something right here. There's a lot of pride in going to our district and coming back and being a shipbuilder. That's a, that's a good thing. I would at some point, but I will talk to the committee chairs about this. I think there are things that we have to maybe look at committee-wise on things such as the insurance issue that we're going to have and the review of some of the other policies we have, just to see if we're doing it right, or is there something we could change that's been changed over the last couple of years that maybe won't set the right. So that will be something I will talk to committee chairman, because it wouldn't be appropriate to get into that now. But other than that, it's a nice fourth, and it's, it's kind of nice when you're out in the community and as a former educator, and some of you know this, kids come back and talk about how nice they had it at Lincoln. Question, Mary.
I know that you had a recent visit to the Boys and Girls Club.
Yes.
Would you share some of that?
Well, Lee and I went, and had we made it an official meeting, we wouldn't have opened it to the public. So, and it was quite crowded in there.
Their programming was rocking and rolling.
There is not, they don't have a lot of space, and I think that was one of the things that, you know, they wanted to know where we might be going, but not at that point yet. But other things that we might be able to share with them, they have after-school programming.
I believe they've done some things in our buildings with feeding or helping kids. So they were looking at options to do that also. They transport kids from our schools to the Boys and Girls Club daily. Actually, they need more seats for, I believe it's Franklin has extra kids that would like to come, but there's no ride on the bus. There's an agreement with the bus company after they pick up their kids, they'll pick up Boys and Girls Club kids and drop them off before they start their run, drop the kids off. So there's little things that we discuss that maybe we can help them with, and down the road, if things happen and we have space or we have places in the district that we're not using for a school anymore, those kind of talks could come up. But it's just really more of an informal visit. It's, it's a busy place.
It really is.
Quite a few kids running around, and they were having lunch, I think.
Yeah, one group was, and then it was.
And I was, I was just joking because it was loud, and it was noisy. It was like the cafeteria at Lincoln during lunch, and I was just thinking back when I was learning how to be a teacher. I was at St. Paul's, and there was a sister on one end of this room and sister on the other end of the room, and it wasn't loud, noisy. And it was just, it was just a different, you know, decades ago how things have changed. But this was, this was pretty cool. They do a nice service. They also work with, I believe, Manash's.
Oh yeah, they have a lot in the Valley. In fact, Boys and Girls Club, the Valley organization is known as like the top one around. They really do a bang up job. They have some programming in Keel also in the county and then our, you know, our very own Stacy Opali, she's a board member. So we've got a nice connection there too. She'll be able to kind of keep us in the loop on what's happening there and what opportunities there might be to partner in the future. So.
So, you know, bringing that up, it might be, it might be something to form an in-house committee of a few board members that might be interested in, you know, working with them. You know, just to maybe get the ball rolling in some areas. Or finding, one of the things I felt bad about with Franklin kids, they can't get the programming even though they want to. Maybe there's a way, there's another place in town that could transport or something. Think about that a little bit.
We do have, we are in conversations with Grant Bus about that.
Okay.
A solution for that for next year, just so you know, like something that we've done. And there are also students that were unable to go. So we're talking.
There's a bus going from River View.
There is now and they're all able to be on that.
Every elementary school now have a bus.
Okay.
Yep.
So I think Franklin's overcrowded.
Correct.
So just know that we, we have met with Steve about that and we're in conversation about.
Thank you.
And I met there this spring with all the elementary principals and the elementary principals all did a tour and connected. You know, a big component of the Boys and Girls Club is tutoring and after school support for academics. So the principals were really excited to learn more about that and then how they can partner with the Boys and Girls Club and communicate with them about things like kids may need to do or activities. So just trying to foster those relationships.
What I love too is, I, I know I thought of Boys and Girls Club, it's basketball and sports and stuff. It's so much more than that. The academics and then they do some art programming, different things. Another thing we were kind of discussing when, and I thought about it when you were talking about ships and shipbuilders. They do have athletic programs there. They do have these other academic things. Is that an opportunity for some of our kids in their service hours to go get a good experience of working with young kids? So I think that's something we can underhand. Any other questions on that? Thank you. Any question? Other business? That's done. Future meeting dates, we have the 22nd, five o'clock here. I think that's the only extra meeting.
Yeah, and I thought, can we get, so we did this last cycle, we stacked our committee meetings. The only major, major difference was that finance and facilities had typically met either the week prior to that. Thoughts on the stacking that we did? Does it work for people? You prefer it?
Yeah. I, I like the date, but finance and facilities, because of a chair or a member of the committee, has to meet at five.
Yeah, okay, perfect.
So I don't mind.
Stack to the end, to end with that one. Okay.
Stacking, but I.
You need to go at five. Okay, cool.
The only way you can get more convenient is through a drive-through. I think we're pretty.
We want it your way. Okay, we'll do that.
Throwing fries with them?
Yes, I do. Thank you for asking.
I make a motion to a jury.
I like that. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Bowman. All those in favor say aye. Oppose say nay. See you on the 22nd.
I have something. Okay.
I see your face.
Okay, that sounds good.